Good evening. We apologize to our guests for starting a little late this evening. So I think we are just about ready to begin. We have everyone. So I would like to ask that the... Who's doing the opening prayer? Christina. Christina, if Christina would like to lead us in prayer, please. Thank you.
Good evening. Please join me in the sign of our faith in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Amen. God of hope, today we give thanks for all of Catholic education. It's history and promise for the future. We remember all those who gave their talents to bring us to where we are today. We ask your blessings on the many who dreamed of a place for educating in faith and labor to create it. We ask special blessings on the many religious communities who built the foundations of Catholic education. We are blessed with the fruits of their labor. May we carry and treasure forward in hope, faith, and love. Amen. Surely this commandment that I am commanding you today is not too hard for you, nor it is too far away. It is not in heaven that you should say, "Who will go up to heaven for us and get it for us so that we may hear and observe it?" Neither is it beyond the sea that you should say, "Who will cross to the other side of the sea for us and get it for us so that we may hear it and observe it?" No, the word is very near to you. It is in your mouth and it is in your heart for you to observe. The response is, "Lord, hear our prayer." For our blessings on this new school year, we pray to the Lord. "Lord, hear our prayer." For students as they return to class, we pray to the Lord. For all involved in the vocation of education, we pray to the Lord. For openness to hear, observe, and live by God's word, we pray to the Lord. For peace and reconciliation in our world, we pray to the Lord. For those who are sick, we pray to the Lord. For those who have died, we pray to the Lord. Heavenly Father, in the business of this meeting, may we hold fast to your word and be open to your guidance. Inspire our discussions and decisions with your wisdom. And may the word of the Lord be in our minds, in our hearts, and on our lips. Amen. In the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit.
Thank you. Thank you, Christina. We would like to inform all visitors that this evening's meeting will be video and audio recorded. So we'd like to welcome you all here. And we'll begin by reviewing the motions adopted in camera. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There were no motions adopted in camera. Information received in camera, the following information was received. Retirements, Francis Giannetti, Lynn Hasi, and Patricia Whippen. They retired effective June 30th, 2017. And Mary Ann Colson retired effective August 31st, 2017. Resignations were Andre Benato, Laura Dispo, Amanda Fernandez, Christy LaChapelle, and Julie Skaringi. Resigned effective August 31st, 2017. Curriculum consultant generalist is Rachel Merv-Movren. Appointed as curriculum consultant generalist effective September 1st, 2017 for a period of up to three years with the possibility of a one-year extension. The appointment of department heads and acting department heads, Julia Mulligan and David Montoya. Appointed as department heads effective September 1st, 2017 for a period of up to four years. Aldona Bubulis appointed as acting department head effective September 1st, 2017 for a period of up to one year. Hiring, I'm going to do you all a favor and just shortline it. I'm not reading the 63 elementary and 47 secondary teachers hired. But those names will be listed in the board minutes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and we're on to the agenda now. Any additions to the agenda? Trustee Quinn.
Could I ask that we add an item, an update from the director on parental concerns about the school uniform provider and school bus staffing and delays, please?
Okay, so that would be under information. So that would be 10.7. So it's update from the director on school board busing and uniforms. School busing and uniforms. Busing and uniforms. Okay. Any other additions? Trustee Intomasi.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'd like to add a notice of motion.
Notice of motion will be 10.8. 10.9, you're splitting school uniforms and busing? That's fine. Okay, 10.7 will be school busing. 10.8 will be uniforms. And 10.9 will be trustee Intomasi's notice of motion. Okay? Anything else? No? All right. A mover please to approve the agenda. Trustee Quinn, seconded by trustee Carabella, all in favor? Thank you. Any declarations of conflict of interest? None? Good, thank you. No presentations, no delegations. Approval of the minutes, 6.1. Minutes of the June 20th, 2017 regular board meeting. Can I have a mover, please, trustee Carabella and trustee Rowe? Any questions? Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I'm just looking at the details for the Angelus motion. So it wasn't approved and it just...
Excuse me, trustee Carabella, what page?
It is 8.1.
8.1. We'll just... Could you just hold for a minute? And we'll get to it. 8.1, okay. Everybody on 8.1? All right. Go ahead, trustee Carabella.
So I appreciate writing down what I was hoping to achieve through the Angelus. And it just, I found that it could have been more specific, the write-up in the minutes, when it just says trustees voiced both concerns and support for the motion. So I think some of the concerns could have been listed. And the support as well.
Through you, Madam Chair. Normally, we just put the outcome of... And so we didn't want to give too much commentary. But if you wish to have some of the comments that were made, that were concerns and comments that were made for support, we could include that. There were, there was a lot of discussion. And to capture all of that in the minutes would, is not really the intent. We're really coming up with a decision, not what the minutes are recorded for. But we could listen to and record, get a few in there for the next, and update these minutes for you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on the minutes? All right, we've got a mover and a seconded. All in favor, please? Thank you. 6.2, the minutes of the June 29th special board meeting. A mover, please? Trustee Michael, seconded by... Were they in camera? Okay. A seconded, please? Trustee Intomasi. All in favor? Thank you. No business, what's that? It's business. Page 17 for business arising from the previous meeting, which I now can't remember. I thought it was a long ago. Okay. Oh, yes, okay. Policy I-26, student trustees on the board approved and status is October 17. Okay, thank you. All right. Action items, 8.1. Updated 2017 capital priorities, business cases, and request for early years capital program submissions. Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This report provides an update to trustees to the report that we presented at the June 20th meeting on the capital priority business cases for submission on September 8th. The change in this report is the addition of a childcare space at Bishop Reading. Originally, we had suggested to move the childcare to St. Peter's and increase it to five classrooms from three to five. In... Well, we were meeting with the region of Holton. There were additional needs identified for Northeast Milton and the request that we maintain or even expand the childcare with Bishop Reading. We have consulted our architect and the addition will not affect the initial proposal for the addition of the classrooms to Bishop Reading. And this action report proposes to submit also a four-room childcare addition to Bishop Reading in addition to the classroom addition proposed in the June 20th report. Other than that, the submission will contain the same priority ranking and business cases as submitted before. And myself and Fred would be happy to take any questions trustees may have. I'm not sure if Fred had any other comments to add.
Thank you. Trustee Quinn.
Through you, Madam Chair. To Superintendent Nagoy, is it common for childcare spaces to be attached to high schools? Or as I understood in the past, it was meant to connect to elementary schools in a way that it would provide opportunity for children who attending those schools to follow on in their elementary years into one of the schools on our boards? So why are we looking at a high school rather than elementary school for this option?
I will let Fred answer this, but it depends where we have space as well and where the need is. With the mandate from the ministry to have 100,000 childcare spaces, it's looking as to where is the demand. And Northeast Milton has quite a bit of demand for childcare as well. They've requested that we maintain it at both locations. So add it to St. Peter's as well as maintain it to Bishop Reading. Fred?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, that is a good question. Because historically, we've been trying to go more towards elementary schools. But what we found in discussing with the provider when we first went in with that notion was that she found a lot of great synergies between having a childcare center also in a secondary school. Because there's opportunities for placement with the co-op students to work with the childcare center. There's also the synergies between having the siblings attending the childcare as well as the older ones in the high school. So what they were seeing was that it was quite effective. And further to what Roxanna was saying, this is an area in Milton where there's a very large demand for additional childcare. And one of the primary reasons for that, it's that it's a mobility hub for GTHA commuters. It's about two kilometers away from the GO station, just down the street. So what they're seeing is a lot of parents will drop their kids off at the daycare center and then hit the GO station, go all the way to Toronto, Hamilton, or wherever. So they've seen a very significant amount of demand. So much so, there's about a deficit of 200 spaces for childcare within that area. So initially, when we thought to move it out of BR, we thought that the five-room addition at St. Peter's would be adequate in meeting the demand. In further conversations throughout the summer with the CMSM, with the Consolidated Municipal Service Manager, that takes care of this for the region, they said there's actually a significant demand. We'd even be willing to add even more spaces. So we spoke to the provider. The provider is very much happy to continue operating in secondary school. In fact, she prefers it. So we'd be looking for additional providers for St. Peter's through tendering, more than likely, depending on what happens with the approvals. So there is a demand in this area for this particular area.
And there's, through you, Madam Chair, there's no room at the St. Peter's site to extend that plan to additional spaces?
Through you, Madam Chair. Right now, at St. Peter's, what we propose and put in place is a five-room childcare. Which, if you look at the St. Peter's site, going to a seven would be a lot more space required and would start really eating into that playground space. And also, you would have to have a provider that would want to operate up to a seven-room childcare. In this instance here, having another location is also beneficial again because of dispersing need. And people that would prefer to go to the secondary school will have that option. Those that prefer to go to the elementary school would also have that option. So at least this way, we have two different areas that we're servicing. Relatively close to one another, but still better to have it dispersed and all concentrated in one mega hub. The other concern that we would have in making something that's significantly large, like a seven-room, is that over time, if ever you'd have to go and tender again, you reduce your pool of potential bidders if they're not, if their model really doesn't look to operating that large of a daycare center. So at least this way, you're providing two spaces at the standard size, which opens up better opportunities for tendering in the future.
Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Did you say that we already have a high school with a childcare attached to it? Which high school is that?
Currently, there is one at Notre Dame. And there's also one at Bishop Reading that operates three rooms. So we'd be looking to extend that to a four-room childcare because there's a need in the toddler age cohort.
Trustee Quinn and trustee Maron.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. What would the effect on the school geography of Bishop Reading be by adding these extra classrooms?
Also, very good question. Initially, that was our concern is whether or not we would have a room. And that's why we initially thought to relocate it elsewhere. But when the architects started looking at the plan, if you look at the second page of the report, in the southeast quadrant of the school, if you just assume that the main entrance is Project North, there is almost just a pad of grass area, which essentially is the footprint of the proposed childcare. So right now, that's not really usable space to begin with for any other project, whether it's parking, portables, because of the fire distance separation. So when you look at that, it's almost, we couldn't use it for anything else otherwise. Locating it here is utilizing space that would be otherwise just grass. Ryan can maybe add to that if I missed anything, but...
Trustee Maron?
You moved it to number one on the priority list. Is that just because of the population growth in the area?
Through you, Madam Chair. The reason I moved it to priority number one is Bishop Reading is our number one priority for the capital priority submission. So I just wanted to align that to that particular ranking.
When you, when you think about it, Milton is bursting at the seams for students. And I know Georgetown isn't far behind. So it's only logical that they will be bursting at the seams for daycare also. Hello?
Through you, Madam Chair. So you said that the ministry is asking us to find these extra places, or is this our idea?
Through you, Madam Chair. It's both. There is a provincial mandate right now, or provincial initiative, to introduce up to 100,000 childcare spaces across Ontario. And namely, they want them in schools. So it's the schools' first initiative. I forget the exact name of the 100,000 childcare spaces. So the ministry is really trying to push for this, to provide that available service to parents. Secondly, it's also part of our responsibility, and the region's responsibility, to try to find these spaces. So we've been working very closely with our public partners to try to identify these locations where we can provide not only childcare spaces, but other community use, joint use partnerships. So this is part of our overall initiative. And it's working with both the region and ourselves to try to identify these spaces to meet the provincial mandate.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Does the province provide us any additional funding for the hours and time that our staff put into planning and proposing these projects? Your time and salary that is paid by the board?
Through you, Madam Chair. The, it's the global community planning and partnership guidelines that the ministry enacted that seeks to do these sorts of partnerships with our other public entities. In terms of cost recovery on the time spent on this, really, at least my opinion, is that this is something that benefits our school as well as our board. It's providing additional service to our parents. So that falls within the mandate of, you know, planning in one aspect, of trying to create that complete community within our neighborhoods. So albeit that it's not directly compensated for, I think it's definitely a benefit to the board for them pushing for this. But the operational costs of the daycare and the capital cost of constructing the space is covered by the ministry.
Trustee Intomasi is moving it, seconded by trustee Rowe. And no other questions since we've had the presentation. Ready for the vote? Recorded votes, as always. Trustee Quinn.
Proposed.
Okay. Anna Maria.
I abstain.
Trustee Rowe.
In favor.
Trustee Christina.
In favor.
Trustee Danko. Vice Chair Trice.
In favor.
Trustee Maron.
In favor.
Trustee Michael.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Thank you. It passes. Thank you. But 9.1. Staff reports 9.1. Oakville South Central Catholic Elementary School approval to proceed with school capital planning and preliminary budget. Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is for the rebuilt school with no childcare on the existing St. Joseph's school site, which we know will also house the students from St. James' School upon opening. So the funding was approved by the ministry back on June 19th. And we received the funding letter in early August. And Fred and Roxanna are going to talk a little bit more about this later on in information item 10.5. But the funding model that the ministry approved requires that the board put forward $4.2 million in proceeds of disposition to partially fund the project with the balance of the funding coming from the ministry. So the total funding on that would be approximately $11.4 million for the new facility. So we're seeking approval on four resolutions. The first is to authorize staff proceeding to select an architect for the project. The second is approving the total budget of the project for $11.4 million. The third is to approve the use of approximately $4.2 million in proceeds of disposition to partially fund the project. And then finally, the fourth resolution to approve the borrowing bylaw to finance the construction of the ministry allocated portion of the funding. And the intent of this would be to have design permits, construction contractors lined up to start the project as soon as school finishes for the school year in July 2018, to allow us a year of construction for a September 2019 opening. So I'd have to take any questions at this time.
Thank you. Roxanna, did you have anything to add to that? No?
Not at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Could you remind me why we offered to use a proceeds of disposition? Was that because it would be more favorable, a chance of getting? Because I'm just reading the first line here says, "School boards will not be required to allocate their proceeds of disposition towards new SCC projects." So did we do it trying to get to the top of the list?
So we already applied for this project once. The ministry denied the project and asked us to come up with a more cost-effective solution. So this is our manner to make it more cost-effective or palatable toward, to the ministry.
Trustee Rowe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just inquiring if borrowing the money as usual, would, does the ministry cost pay for the interest costs as well as the money that we borrowed at the end?
Madam Chair, yes, the funding model, current funding model, is that every six months, we would receive funding for what the expenses we've incurred on the project. So because we have that time lag when we have to pay for the work already completed, we would incur interest expense costs. And there is additional grant above and beyond what is being given to us in capital priority funding for the interest that we incur.
Trustee Maron.
For the next meeting, can we get a breakdown of costs associated with this project? Maybe some comparisons of similar projects just around the province itself? Just to, so trustees have a better understanding of the costs involved with a school this, a school this size. Because as a board, we've approved budgets for schools much larger than this, much small, some smaller than this, depending on what we're actually putting into the school itself. But I think it would do well if the public knew what actually goes into the building in a comparison of other boards and what their building costs are as well.
Yes, certainly. The budget for the project is based on a ministry template, which takes into account the size of the building. So that's why we would have schools that will have $11 million, $13 million, whether or not it has a childcare. This one does not. So if we're looking at the Milton School, which was 13-plus million, that included about $2.5 million, I believe, for a childcare space, which this does not. They're very standard. The ministry will fund based on the template, how big the school is that we get approved for. We've always been within budget, come under budget in terms of where we end up with the expenses. So the budget is not to exceed this funding. However, we try our best to find the most efficiencies in terms of the actual costs.
Is it staff's goal always to try to spend the maximum amount that the province allows? Sorry, is it board staff's goal to spend as much as the province allows? Or is it tryout?
That's an excellent question. Actually, it is in everybody's interest to save as much as possible. Once we get allocated based on the template, we get to keep the allocation. With ministry funding, we get to use it on additional projects. So for example, if we're looking in Appendix A of the ministry, well, the ministry that will come later, but if we're looking at the funding breakdown, there's about $1.9 million in what they called unencumbered funding. That means it's prior savings on previous construction projects, previous schools, that we saved on St. Anne, St. Mary's in the past. And they allow us, and now that we, they've allocated the full budget based on the template. Our actual cost came under. They allow us to reuse that funding on additions or other projects. But we do need ministry's approval to reuse it for another purpose. However, it still stays allocated to our board.
Roxanna, does that include the land? Because we already have the land.
No, the land is going to be on the, it's going to be on the actual site for St. Joseph's. So this is only construction of the building. Land will be separate. So if we do have to buy land, that would be separate. If it is, for example, in Milton, it's a growth area, that the land will be covered through education development charges. So it's a different fund. through education development charges. So it's a different funding source than the construction of the building.
And the price for Milton number eight is about 13 million something?
The construction of the building, yes.
But the land is in addition? Is the land in addition on Milton?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
That was very helpful, but just to clarify, you'll provide a bit more context or information? You can send us maybe before the next meeting as well, just to, so we can learn a bit more about it as well.
And Ryan?
We have been working on other 21st century new school designs out of a smaller footprint. So we do have designs that we've been working on over the past two years that we know will fit within the kind of dollar per square foot range that this project would fall into. So we do have, you know, it is a smaller school than we built in recent times. So you have to be a little bit more efficient on your hallway space and kind of those extra spaces. But we do have some designs that we've come up with through architects that still keep kind of the large learning commons, the large gymnasiums, and reduce the hallway space and vestibule space to make more efficient use of that, so we can still hit our, kind of our gross floor area targets, as well as our cost targets, obviously.
Through you, Madam Chair. So if you are already working with architects, are we giving you permission here to seek out new architects? Or have you already chosen one as it stands right now?
No, we were working on these probably about two years ago, throughout the 21st century new school design process. So looking at how we can incorporate new pedagogies into the, into our new school design. So nothing's been done on this site specific. So there's no, I guess, preconceived notions about which architects would be bidding or winning this job.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on this particular issue? We've got the motions that will come back to us at the next board meeting. And we've also got a request from Trustee Marine and other trustees about more information. We're good on that? Okay, so we can move on then, trustees? Yes, excellent. So we'll go to 9.2, St. Mark's Catholic Elementary School childcare, and approval to proceed with school capital planning and preliminary budget. Ryan?
Through you, Madam Chair. This is for the St. Mark's School addition, which would be a five-classroom addition plus a three-classroom childcare. And then Ontario Early Years Child and Family Center as well. So similarly to the St. Joseph's project, this was funded back on June 19th through an announcement through the ministry, and the funding letter was received in early August. This project, however, the, all the funding, the full funding is provided by the ministry, although through various sources, as you see in the report there, it is all ministry-provided funding. So we're seeking approval on three resolutions. The first would be to authorize staff to proceed and select an architect for the project, to approve a total budget for the project, which is approximately $3.7 million, and then approve the borrowing bylaw to finance the construction. And again, this one, we're hoping to get all the approvals in place and have design and permits and contractors lined up to start construction in July 2018. And this one, we hope to hit an early 2019 opening, so hopefully after Christmas time, with the opening for the new addition wing. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions on St. Mark's? None? Yes, Ingrid.
I just have a question. I might be wrong, but so this certain project does have a childcare, like, aspect of it, while the first project that we talked about, the Oakville South Central, did not, correct? Is there a reason why, like, how is that decided where the childcare project?
We work with our regional partners to figure out where they have a need or a demand for childcare spaces, and that's where we determine. So basically, we sign off that we would like a childcare there, and they sign off as well that they have a demand for childcare spaces in that area. And in the case of St. Joseph's, there was not a demand in that area.
Thank you.
Questions? No? Okay, thank you very much, Ryan. Appreciate everything that you and your department do. Thank you. Information items, student trustee update. I don't know if our student trustees are ready. You had a busy day.
So actually, no, we have some stuff for Senate, because we picked them last year. So our senators met with our international students, along with Ms. Pennelli. She did a great job of organizing an event for our students to come into St. Thomas of Aquinas and kind of have their orientation day. And our senators were there to kind of chat with them. They introduced them to their school and showed them around where their lockers would be, where their classes would be the next day. So that was very successful. And we have our upcoming Senate meeting next Tuesday, September 12th, at Assumption, which is Ingrid's school. And we'll be looking at our bullying prevention launch and brainstorming for that. And on behalf of all three of the student trustees, we'd like to wish our students at HCDSB a really positive and successful year. So that's pretty much it.
Anything else from the other student trustees? No?
I mean, Christina pretty much summed it up for all three of us. But I would just personally like to say that as opposed to when we started the international students project last year, it was really impressive to see the drastic number growth that we had at the beginning of this school year, because we do get more students at the beginning of the school year, rather than in the middle of the school year. So it was really kind of, I was really kind of amazed to see how it kind of took off and how our senators were so eager to work with the larger amounts of students that we had this time around and accommodate everyone to their best of their abilities. And it's wonderful to see how our school communities are growing and accommodating these students and welcoming them into their communities. So I'm very blessed to be a part of that project. And thank you, Ms. Pennelli, for taking us with you on this project.
All right. School educational field trips. Superintendent Cipriano.
Through you, Madam Chair. You have before you the approved overnight school field trips. There are nine for the fall from all of our municipalities. Most of them are the camp trips, the fall camp trips. However, there are two I want to highlight that are a pilgrimage to Montreal, Quebec. Corpus Christi Burlington and Christ the King Georgetown are going together for that pilgrimage. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Trustee Quinn. Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. To Superintendent Cipriano, can you update us on the policy for swimmer aptitude of students traveling to events where they will be exposed to water?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'll defer that to our superintendent who oversees our trips and, thank you, out-of-classroom program policy, Mr. Overholt.
Through you, Madam Chair. The process that we go through at our board is a standard that's higher than what the requirements and the guidelines are for the OFEA safety guidelines. Every board in the province goes by those guidelines, and any board can go and up the standard. We at our school board require every student, if they are going to partake in any type of water activity, to pass the test. Tests are given in terms of those students who are going to attend. If a student cannot swim and they readily admit it, they will not pass that test. They would not partake in any water activities, whether it be canoeing, whether it be some type of swim that's going on. Whereas the OFEA guidelines allows individuals to be able to pass a certain part with personal lifesaving devices to go into canoes and to canoe with them. However, we do not allow that. What we are going to do, which we've informed our administrators, is to ensure that teachers sign off to say that they are aware, that they've talked to their administrator, that they are not partaking, those students who do not pass the test are not partaking in any of the water activities, because many of the outdoor trips do have more than water activities that are associated with them. So we do not want to deny them the opportunity to go on those trips. And principals will also sign off to say that they've had that conversation with them. However, again, we believe that our process is one of a higher standard, and we've been following that throughout. And it is in the package that comes to superintendents to say that swim tests have been completed at the schools.
Trustee Carabella?
Just from that, can I have a follow-up? Like, I can't, does every high school have a pool? Is that where they do the swim test?
Through you, Madam Chair. No. They would go to the locals' pool where they could, and the lifeguards who are there are aware of what requirements they have to pass, and they put them through those tests.
Okay. I also have another question about those. Is there, because they're quite pricey. It's a great thing to go on this pilgrimage. I'm just wondering, how, do all the students get to go? Or are there students that are left behind? And do they also get to take advantage of some leadership activities? Do you know if?
Through you, Madam Chair. I don't have the exact details, but many of our leadership trips are often a combination of students volunteering or requesting to take part in those trips, as well as teachers and administration tapping students on the shoulders, saying this would be a good opportunity for them. Outside of our eTAC trips, no student would ever be denied any of our overnight trips or our day trips because of lack of ability to pay. So our eTAC trips would fall outside of that minimum standard. But all our other trips are available to all of our students, regardless of their ability to pay or not.
I have another question. I have two others. So this one is regarding the Christ the King trip, and it's in Huntsville, and it's Saturday night and Sunday. And in the past, you've always put on our board, on the report, that they attend Mass. So it's not written on this one, so I'm just following up on that.
Sure. Through you, Madam Chair. I do follow it up, and I've been informed that they're getting home Sunday early, so that students will have an opportunity to attend Sunday evening Mass.
Okay. We don't have that in Milton. Okay. One question that came to me recently, and it was from someone outside of the system. And basically, when we have the students in water activities at camp, the teachers are expected to supervise them, but the teachers may not have lifesaving qualifications. Can you speak to that?
Through you, Madam Chair. Could you just, sorry, repeat the question again?
The question that came to me was that we take our students to camp, and they do all the activities, and they've got the, pass them for swim test. But if there's an issue, is it only the teachers that are supervising these students? Or is there a qualified lifeguard belonging to the camp who would be there?
Through you, Madam Chair. If they are doing any type of swim activity, a lifeguard in the requirements must be on duty. In regards to the canoeing and those types of activities, there would be a trained facilitator that would be doing those activities as well.
Does a trained facilitator have lifesaving qualifications?
I would have to look up our safety guidelines in that. I'm not positive in regards to that, but I'll get back to you. I'll look at our safety guidelines. But for sure, in terms of the swim activities, they would require a lifeguard on duty.
Okay, thank you. All right. Summer 2017 school facilities, item 10.3. Ryan?
Through you, Madam Chair. My amazing team in facilities took on a couple of projects this summer. So just a brief summary of what we completed over the summer. So new portable classrooms, we have 26 new units installed for today. So far, that's anyways, still potential for a few more to add. And all 26 of those are at four different schools in Milton. So lots of growth in Milton to see. On top of that, we had a total of 44 portable moves. We undertook nine major school renovations, ranging from $300,000 up to $2 million. We had major asphalt replacements at eight schools, 13 new natural playgrounds installed. Some of the larger projects, we removed the atrium skylight at Bishop Reading, which was a major project over the summer. We removed the porta-pac at St. Mark's School, which was prohibitive to repair. We installed a new sanitary sewer line that was across the old church property at Holy Cross School in Georgetown, where there's the new seniors residence being built. We installed a voltage harmonizer at Holy Trinity to increase hydro efficiency. On top of that, we cleaned $3.6 million, or $3.6 million square feet of school space and hosted over 120 community use groups at various times throughout the summer in our schools. So we'll provide a subsequent report later on in the fall, once we have all the invoices in for all the capital projects, to reconcile all those. And then once we have all the portable classroom and surplus classroom numbers completed, we'll provide another report like we usually do to update on where the surplus rooms are and where the portable classrooms are for the school year.
Questions from the trustees? No? No. Okay. Trustee Carabella?
I wanted to know about the kindergarten outdoor learning play spaces, the naturalized play spaces. So we've had a year of them, the ones that were built last year. And did we get any feedback? Were the children, you know, more involved? Did the teachers like it? Was there any feedback from those?
Yeah, we've had a lot of great feedback from the staff and from the students about the creative learning that it creates in the classroom. So there is a little bit more maintenance and upkeep that goes along with them. But we expect it will last much longer than our traditional kind of metal post and plastic platform structures that we've had in the schools as well. So we have about two-thirds of the elementary schools complete now, and hopefully get to the rest next summer.
Any other questions on that? No? Okay, thank you. And then Ryan, 10.4, school drinking water lead content test results.
So through you, Madam Chair. We undertook a lot of school drinking water testing for lead content over the summer. It was over, started in May, and ended, finished out in July and August. So there was new drinking water regulations that took effect in July. There's been several changes to the regulation, but the major change is that where previously we had to test one location per school per year, we now have to test every drinking water location in all of our schools over the next three years. So this being the first year of that window. So it's a substantial number of increased amount of testing. We did an audit starting in April and May. We have about 802 drinking water locations across our 55 facilities, and we managed to test approximately 500 of them over the summer. So about 65% completion. So the ministry minimum was one-third. We hit almost two-thirds. And we're now, we're in good shape to finish all the testing this coming summer. So with the results, with more testing, you know, we did have more exceedances. We had eight sites had exceedances this year. Two of the locations we later discovered were in cafeteria kitchens, which are only for hand washing and dishwashing. So we were able to remove those from the drinking water list, and those are no longer on our exceedance list. And that leaves us six sites that exceeded this year. And we worked with the Public Health Unit to come up with remedial actions, which included replacing some of the fixtures, and then doing daily flushing for other ones where it was discovered to be line issues. We do daily flushing, so we flush them in the morning so that the test samples are coming clean when the students arrive. So with that, we are compliant and safe with the Safe Drinking Water Act, and we are in really good shape to finish all of our drinking water testing for lead content next summer. Yeah, and that would be a year ahead of the ministry guidelines. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. So looking at table one on page 224, St. Joseph, Oakville, for example, all school plumbing flushed daily for the next two years during periods of vacancy. So who's responsible for that and who's monitoring that?
So the custodians do it every morning before the students get in. So the custodians are there at 6:00. We don't take any, even if we have morning bookings at the school, we don't take anybody in until 7:00. So the custodians do that first thing when they get in every morning. They do the flushing. And then they have daily flushing logs, where they would report the time and the locations they flush. So it's actually part of the new regulation as well, where previously the custodians had to report that they flushed the school. They now have to report every location and which time they had flushed each location.
How long will it take for?
A lot. It's usually anywhere from, depending on how many, if you're doing daily flushing, you're probably going to get a half hour to do that. So your first half hour every day is spent doing that. So.
So on a snowy icy morning, where it's an hour of salty fire, when will that flushing begin?
It's definitely, flushing is done first, but it's definitely a challenge in those schools. And that's why we're going back through, we've replaced a lot of fixtures already. We're looking at locations where we can replace more fixtures in those schools. And then locations where we may have, you know, you can only do so much with replacing fixtures. Some of the lead content is caused from solder, which is in the piping, actually. There we have to do lead filters on those. So we are looking at schools that are causing us problems with crewing, with custodial crewing, and looking at other remedial solutions such as lead filters for those as well. But lead filters, again, cause more issues with, now you have to maintain lead filters as well, so.
Now, if it's a matter of flushing?
A matter of flushing, couldn't it be done by the evening custodian? Because it's a 24-hour cycle. So flush in the evening so that the day custodian
So, flush in the evening so that the day custodian can get the school set up for the morning.
The issue is that it sits overnight, and the lead content leaches into the water system. And that's what's causing the exceedance. The first person in that, to turn the fountain on, that's how we do the testing. The testing, it sits overnight, and then we test it first thing in the morning. And that's when we detect the lead content. You'll see a lot of those schools where it says standing sample was clean, but the, or the flush sample was clean, but the standing sample was exceeded. And that's because it's been sitting for six hours overnight. And the first, you know, few cubic meters of water that come out are, have lead content in them, so.
Ryan, can we assume that Bishop Reading is clear then? It had five exceedances last year. Can we assume that the fixtures are replaced and it's fine now?
Yes. We did replace all those fixtures as well, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Ryan. We appreciate all that your department has done. Thank you. Going back for one quick minute about the swimming supervision. I believe Superintendent Overholt, do you have some more information on that?
I do. Through you, Madam Chair. There in the, our safety guidelines, at least one supervisor must be instructed with necessarily required qualifications, a lifeguarding qualifications, and instructor qualifications related to whether it be canoeing, flat water, rafting, and so on. So, those are qualifications that at least one must have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you getting that. 10.5, 2017, school consolidation, capital grant, ministry funding announcement. Superintendent Nagoy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This report provides the ministry letter in response to our January 2017 submission for school closures, consolidations, and capital business cases. It outlines in Appendix A the breakdown for funding for priority number two, which is the Oakville South Central Catholic Elementary School to be built on the St. Joseph site, as well as the funding for St. Mark's, rightsizing, demolition, and classroom addition with the childcare. It also provides the reasoning for not funding priority number one, the Oakville Northeast Elementary School, the St. Michael's site rebuilt, and priority number four, North Georgetown Catholic Elementary School, which the ministry stated they would be cost prohibitive, and we should look at alternative options. In our action report this evening, the list of capital priorities, business cases, we are resubmitting both of these priorities. The alternative for St. Michael's and St. John's with consolidation, with school renewal and a childcare. And we are also looking at Georgia, North Georgetown Holy Cross rebuild. So, we are resubmitting them once again for this September submission. In addition, Appendix B of the report provides the initial draft terms of reference for school consolidation and closures transition committee, which are proposed to be implemented starting October for both projects. The South Oakville Central, St. Joseph rebuild, so St. James into St. Joseph, as well as St. John's and St. Michael's projects as well. And myself, Superintendent Overholt, or Fred would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Superintendent Nagoy? Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. The resubmission of the Northeast Catholic School consolidation, are you proposing any changes be made in what we're submitting? As the response from the ministry says that the new school costs were prohibited. So, are we just asking for the same thing, or are we proposing something new?
The three-in-one school is cost prohibitive. As a result, we're going with the second alternative of the committee and approved by the board. So, we are looking at making, as the ministry suggests, making available, use of available spaces. So, looking at school renewal and adding a childcare for St. Michael's, as well as an addition to St. Marguerite.
So, this was plan or option B that was approved by the board. Have you made any changes to that in what you're planning on submitting in September? No?
Superintendent Overholt have something to add there?
Through you, Madam Chair. I guess I want to clarify that the Plan B required little to no funding when we were going through. So, that when we knew, found out that it wasn't going to be funded, the original plan that we put in, we knew we had the backup plan to go forward. But we also have found out recently, and Fred may be able to expand a little bit, that there is a need for daycare in the area. So, with that availability, we are putting forth to the ministry, not saying that we require that for this consolidation to happen, but we're also putting that forward so that if we can get funds, we can put on the daycare addition to the site. But right now, as is, we can go forward with our 12B option with little to no funding.
Trustee Quinn?
So, is that coming back to us for approval at the board? The way we've just been given action items or information items for action that we would recommend that as a board, rather than Tim telling me now that they're adding a daycare?
Trustee Nagoy, you going to answer that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll let Fred add to this, but this has already been approved with a childcare at the June 20th meeting. So, it's not new. It's just additional information. It, the childcare at, Fred, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the childcare at St. Mike's has already been discussed.
Through you, Madam Chair. That's correct. As part of the June 20th report, we provided tentative locations for future childcare that we would submit as part of this memorandum. In that list at the June 20th meeting, we had St. Michael's, Georgetown, and the Milton 10 projects going forward with potential childcare projects contingent on CMSM approval. We also had St. Peter's as a separate EYCP funding approval. And tonight, we just added Bishop Reading as an additional one to that. So, we had discussed it, or it was presented to the Board of Trustees at both the first meeting of June, I forget the date, and the June 20th for approval. There needs to be a vote held on the capital priorities submission for them to have any standing with the ministry.
Okay. Questions? Trustee Carabella?
Through you, Madam Chair. You just said it was given to us as a report, as not an action item. We didn't vote on that. We were, did we?
Probably in the minutes that we have on our desk here. It's just gonna take a few minutes to find it. Roxana?
The action report in, on today's agenda, 8.1, has actually the resolution that was approved on the June 20th as Appendix A, just for, I know we've been, through a summer, so we're trying to wrap our heads in terms of what we did. In the report, online, it's page 404 of the actual report in item 8.1. And I need to check on the package. Probably page 21 of your package, I would assume.
Appendix A. Void resolution 149-17. Do we all have that? Okay. Questions on the resolution that we passed way back in June? Trustee Carabella?
Just a key word there would be potential. So, it wasn't clear that it was actually gonna do that. So, that number three, so St. Michael's Catholic Elementary School Renewal and Renovations Projects, which the PAR approved on March 7th with potential childcare.
Yes. It was reliant on the sign-off. Fred, do you want to speak to that?
Through you, Madam Chair. No, that's correct. Exactly how you put it. It was contingent on the CMSM approval or sign-off.
So, can we move on? Are we all content with that? All right? All right? All right. Thank you, Roxana. Thank you, Fred. Thank you, Tim. Okay. Moving on, sit, I'm sorry. Trustee Carabella?
So, would the, sorry, back to that. Would the community behalf to be made aware of this? Like, the people that were in the whole ARC committee and that this is gonna, they're thinking, they don't know about this, because I even, right? I'm just, so, do they need to know about it? Parents, so.
Through you, Madam Chair. We brought it to the board tonight because, I mean, you might have heard about it over email, but as a board, you weren't made aware. So, we will be sending out information, news to these communities to make them aware of the outcome.
We're good? All right. Thank you very much, Fred. 10.6, parent retention survey, Madam Director.
Through you, Madam Chair. This is an information report to share a parent survey that we did this year. And moving forward, as a board motion, we do this every year. And this past year, we had a survey online from June 1st to June 14th. And what the survey intends to do is to survey families to see if they'd had any feedback on whether they had any inclination to leave our district and the reasons perhaps why that might have occurred. So, just to give you some background, we received, or 8,338 people accessed the survey, but 6,198 people responded to question one. And that's about 20% of our parents. It stated that they seriously considered leaving the Hilton Catholic District School Board. So, then, when they answered that question, we would present them with more details to identify those concerns for motivating them to do so. And 1,211 respondents proceeded to answer that question. And there were 6,429 reasons. And we've listed there the top six reasons for leaving. Our present getting and keeping good teachers, quality of programs offered, child's learning environment, instructional approaches, not responsive to the child's needs or interests, the quality of curriculum, and bullying and inclusion issues. They were also, parents were also able to choose other from the list of reasons and could provide more detail in their own words. And we had 226 respondents. And the common reasons were distance from home or school, the lack of French teachers and programming, uniform costs, and not enough outdoor extracurricular activities or events. And then, finally, the question three, in their opinion. We asked, is your school's child put too much, too little, or about the right amount of emphasis on strengthening the distinctive Catholic character? And we had 6,190 respondents. And you can see from the chart that the majority felt that there was just the right amount. So, I'm happy to take any questions. Our chief research officer, Lisa Collmore, is here too, who is intimately connected with the data and the report. So, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Madam Director. Trustee Carabella, trustee Intomasi, trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. To Lisa. How did this study, the survey this year, compare to last year? Were there more respondents to different answers?
So, through you, Madam Chair. Last year, there were just under 3,000 respondents. And this year, there were about 8,000 who actually accessed the survey and about 6,000 who actually gave a response. So, about double the amount of respondents. In terms of the percentage who had actually considered leaving our board, it's roughly the same. Last year, it was about 21.6%, and this year, it was about 19%.
Thank you. Trustee Intomasi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Lisa, I guess. When I look at the numbers, I guess, and I see those 6,429 reasons, do we know in fact whether and, how many families actually left? Or were these all just considerations? And when we're looking at the reasons, assuming you're lumping them together, where does, where does this information go from here? You know, does it, does it go back to the schools? Does it go back to the principals? Is there some brainstorming that happens to try to alleviate some of it, if it can be? You know, how much is it just people are disgruntled? And how much are real reasons? I guess is what I'd like to know as well.
Through you, Madam Chair. So, in terms of whether or not they actually go through with it and leave the board, I don't know, because the questionnaire doesn't ask that. It just asks them if they've considered leaving it within the last school year. And in terms of where the information goes, that's to be decided. I'm simply presenting it here to the board, and it's up to whomever the powers that be to use the information to make accurate decisions.
Just to add to that, on the second part of trustee Intomasi's, obviously, we, at the senior team, we look at these results and look to see if there's, obviously, if there's enough people saying, like, getting and keeping good teachers or programs, that obviously has an effect on how we staff and how we look at our programming needs. So, this isn't just lost in a vacuum. We look at it at the senior table.
Thank you. After trustee Quinn. Good. Okay.
Through you, Madam Chair. I think that answered my question, as long as we're taking these under consideration. I'm not sure this applies to the 80/20 rule, but a lot of people have opinions they want to share. And hopefully, we'll take them under advisement.
Thank you. Trustee Ingrid?
Through you, Madam Chair. I just had a question about the reasons, the top reasons that the parents gave this year. And if you had any data comparing, like, the reasons for last year or how they compared between the two years?
Through you, Madam Chair. So, four of the reasons were the same as last year. So, four were getting and keeping good teachers, quality of programs offered, instructional approaches, not responsible, responsive to child's needs and interests, and quality of curriculum. And new to this year were child's learning environment and bullying and inclusion issues. Last year, the two additional ones were availability of specialized programs and absence of sports and extracurriculars.
Thank you. Any further questions? Trustee Murray?
What action is staff gonna take on bullying and inclusion issues, if any? Just with that appearing, obviously, it's been a priority of the province for quite some time. And we, I know we've invested a lot as a board into this, into this supporting area as well.
Yep. Through you, Madam Chair. Tony is heading up our bullying prevention program. So, this is also good information for the students and the staff who forward the bullying prevention program to say there's still some issues out there, parents, that parents have expressed. So, what can we do to spread the, spread the word and also improve on this? So, that will be taken under with the anti-bullying or the bullying prevention program. This will be shared with them.
Thank you very much. And thank you to all who worked on that very important project. Going on now to 10.7, which is the update on the school buses.
Yep. Through you, Madam Chair. Trustee Quinn asked for an update, and today is the first day. And maybe Fred can help me too. But I've, I've got a note here from Karen LaCoix, who's been doing a number of radio and print informations. And she said the vast majority of delays this morning were caused by high traffic around schools. There were construction on the roads and some mechanical issues with the buses today, which is typical for the first few days of September. There were minimal delays, minimal delays were a result of school bus drivers not being available. 13 of HSTS' 860 runs, which include runs for both boards, that were late this morning, approximately 1.5% could be attributed to a shortage of school bus drivers. So, that was the update that I received from HSTS. I'm not sure if, Fred, you have anything to add?
You've come for something else?
Yep. Through you, Madam Chair. Trustee Quinn asked for an update. Superintendent- Um, Superintendent Cipriano, uh, met with the senior leadership of ISW uniforms last week, where it was acknowledged that the high number of back orders have been an issue. It was acknowledged that the level of service was not to their standard and they apologized for the extensive delays. Um, obviously ISW was surprised by the level of demand and shared with us that their staff is working around the clock to cross clothing and stock shelves. Um, they shared with us that many of the frontline staff, uh, working at their store have received the brunt of parent complaints and verbal abuse, but these are actually some of our secondary students that are working there. We were assured that all back orders will be filled by Thanksgiving, and in response to information received at this meeting, Superintendent Cipriano communicated to all of our parents the status of these delays and outlined that students would not be affected by not being in, or disaffected, uh, by not being in full uniform, and the same information was communicated to principals, uh, last week. We will continue to work with ISW until the stock is replenished and the back orders are filled and ensure that the level of customer service rece- received in our stores is up to our standards.
Thank you. Any questions pertaining to that? No? Trustee Carabella?
Well, can you remind me, um, when we were discussing the uniform and the RFP process and, um, why we never, or is part of like surveying, getting feedback from parents, what they think about the uniform and suppliers? Can you remind me if we voted on the motion to do that or why we didn't do that? 'Cause I'm thinking we had a, um, a survey for the Angelus going out to all the parents for a prayer, and, um, here we have the uniform, which is a really big issue, and, you know, why didn't, why that wouldn't, wasn't considered? Or just remind me if you remember at that point what we decided or what we voted on or about the whole process.
Superintendent Cipriano?
Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, although there wasn't, uh, direct, uh, request for parental or stakeholder feedback with regard to the RFP and the, uh, and the providers that were part of that RFP proposal, uh, there was stakeholder input, uh, when we brought, sent out, uh, policy two forty-one, uh, when it was, uh, when it was originally created. Policy two forty-one, which is our uniform, uh, policy, uh, our, uh, dress code policy does outline, uh, the, in the policy that, that, uh, the, the sole, the uniform provider is one sole company, uh, and so there was input at that time when the policy was first created. There was feedback for and against having one individual supplier. Obviously, in the policy, it doesn't outline, uh, or name a specific company, uh, but there was input at that time, uh, with regard to that. I know that the policy was last reviewed in two thousand and sixteen, and I can't recall whether we sent that out again for stakeholder input. Uh, I, I don't recall, but, but that wasn't, we did have, we do have CPIC members on the RFP committee, uh, that reviewed the proposals from all of the, uh, potential bidders, uh, and once, and as I, um, indicated, uh, earlier, uh, there were CPIC members, there were trustees, there were senior staff who were able to, uh, touch and feel the, the quality of the materials, look at the, uh, programs, look at the, and, and review the service.
Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Carabella. I think because, uh, your motion proposed a new policy, that it was sent out for parental consultation, but in, uh, my efforts to change the policy, uh, two four one, there wasn't a board or trustee support for that, so there was no consultation with, with parents.
Through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Quinn. Did we actually vote on that, on that, on sending out a survey feedback the same way we voted on the new policy of the Angelus?
No, there was no support for changing the policy, so it passed as, uh, with small amendments.
Thank you very much to all. Um, ten point nine, trustee Intomasi, your notice of motion, please.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, of a notice of motion for exception to policy I dash fifteen, school name selection. Would you like it read now or shall I just submit it for? Should it be read? Okay. Okay, here we go. Whereas Giacomo Corbaccio served the Halton Catholic District School Board for more than twenty-six years and was recognized across our district and across the province as a highly respected Catholic leader. Whereas Giacomo Corbaccio oversaw the construction and successful completion of twenty-nine schools across Halton Catholic District School Board. Whereas under Giacomo Corbaccio's steady leadership and vision, the Halton Catholic District School Board was consistently recognized for the excellent condition of its schools and buildings. Whereas through Giacomo Corbaccio's commitment to stewardship of resources, Halton Catholic Schools have consistently demonstrated high facility condition index ratings and environmental savings. Whereas Giacomo Corbaccio demonstrated a keen understanding of the importance of meeting the needs and demands of twenty-first learning environment in, that should be twenty-first century, learning environment in Halton Catholic Schools, incorporating new pedagogical standards into classroom design and functionality. Whereas Giacomo Corbaccio conveyed an extraordinary commitment to collaborative, with collaboration with staff, parents and community partners, as evidenced through the many strong positive relationships he formed and nurtured. Whereas Giacomo Corbaccio maintained a strong, active personal faith guided by gospel values. Whereas Giacomo Corbaccio, through his exceptional leadership, had been a passionate advocate for Catholic education within the province of Ontario, a true Catholic leader who embraced his calling to serve with integrity, with vision and with humility, never losing sight of what is best for students. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve an exception to policy I dash fifteen, school name selection, and declare that the next newly constructed Halton Catholic Elementary School be named Giacomo A. Corbaccio Catholic Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Intomasi. That item will come for, uh, action at the September nineteenth board meeting. Thank you. Uh, correspondence, there's no miscellaneous information, correspondence, twelve point one, you have a letter from the Halton District School Board, uh, speaking about their, uh, land tax changes that we also had on. Trustee Quinn?
Just through you to perhaps the director, does this match what we've increased our transfers to, or, or are they, uh, is there any difference in the EDC charges or are they exactly the same?
Uh, could you send that out by email and that will satisfy? Just to see the difference between what the charges are from the two boards, if that's all right? Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, so that is that. Uh, we don't have any questions, Rosie? No questions? Sorry? Uh, director has an announcement. Go ahead, please.
Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, we just confirmed late this afternoon that, um, Monsignor Crutch will be able to officiate, um, a groundbreaking and blessing for, uh, Milton number eight on September the twenty-sixth, so we'll, uh, keep trustees informed as that plan comes together in a hurry. Yes. Probably the morning.
Thank you very much. That's good to know. All right, so that will finish our, um, open agenda. We will be moving back into in camera, so we thank all our guests who are here today. We appreciate that you've stayed with us through a long meeting and, uh, we hope to see you again. So thank you, and senior staff and student trustees, thank you very much. You're welcome to go home early. Thank you.